I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since Jake's not in here right now, do you wanna go ahead and what?
Me?
What's addition? Oh, I'm sorry. The planning commission recommendation?
Yes, I have one addition.
I'm sorry.
We should have an addition.
Yeah, we have the.
So Jake, you're up.
My boy.
Oh.
That was quick. Just inside. So our topic is Forest Service and Community Justice. Before you use the agreement, uh, we have with the Forest Service. This is all positive impact of thousand dollars and some small change. This is for the fence work and. Some of the work that you understand grounds, uh, we do for the Forest Service. So our current, um, contract expires June thirtieth of twenty-two. Forest Service is asking to extend that to June thirtieth of twenty-three. That's gonna change.
Do we get like fuel surcharge? Can we make expense part of that?
That's a part of that thousand bucks. Now, we have a separate agreement with Gray Campbell, um, for another twenty-three, twenty-five hundred bucks. So somewhere along the line, that's about thirty-five hundred, four thousand dollars. We'll give some for service for them to work out there. I don't have any questions. I don't have any. Commissioner, you have any?
No.
Very straightforward. And then real quickly, and he's out, he just came across my desk recently. And this is in regards to, um, get you guys.
Measure one-ten?
This is in regards to about measure one-ten, which, um, allowed drug charges to become violations. So, um, one-ten decriminalized most unlawful possession of controlled substances. Reduction penalties, the class E violation, hundred dollar maximum fine. Effective February first, most PCS possession of controlled substance offenses are punishable by a fine. No jail supervision, no other criminal penalties can be imposed. This is put together by the Judicial Department. So looking down at the bottom, they're on page one, February one of twenty-one through February twenty-eight, twenty-two. It shows the counties who, um, in certain courts heard all those cases. And just the raw data, um, it breaks it down into demographics on the back page and some different, uh, graphs, but a follow-up email that was received from all these numbers here. Two thousand eighty-nine cases. Uh, ninety-one calls were completed for screening. So there's a hotline you can call and get screened. Fifty-five callers, fifty-five of the ninety-one only wanted to complete the screening. Seventeen completed the screening, were already involved with other support services elsewhere. We're not interested in additional resources provided by the recovery center hotline. And nineteen callers completed the screening, were not involved in support services elsewhere. Um, and we're not interested in additional resources. So, um, just looking at that, it's pretty clear to see that about measure one-ten's a flop. Folks are still using drugs and that's two thousand eighty-nine cases in a year. From February one of twenty-one through February twenty-eight of twenty-two. Remind you, prior to this, when PCS was felonies and or misdemeanors, the number of cases per month statewide would have been twenty-five and twenty-seven hundred a month. So, um, I, I don't, I don't blame law enforcement. They spend more time writing reports and doing, doing their work, um, than they do in court. So why, why?
It's interesting to look at this and see that Graham and Bernie Kennedy have zero cases. That means what?
It means there's a lot of discretion involved in law enforcement. It means.
They're just not wasting their time doing it.
Their time.
Doesn't mean they don't have a problem. Well, they, they spend more time writing the report and dealing with it. And then if the person doesn't come to court to deal with the fine, nothing happens anyway. So basically they've legalized it.
It's a hundred dollar fine total anyways.
Right, so there's no ramifications or accountability if they don't pay the fine?
Yeah, there's more, there's more, there's a higher fine for running a stop sign than there is.
And that's just what I was gonna say, there's other traffic events with a higher fine. I mean, if we're gonna cite these guys for a hundred dollar citation for not using a crosswalk, it's about the same.
So basically what's happening is they're gonna stay on drugs, put them in the property and call them.
It's a hundred and sixty-five dollar fine for running a stop sign. You run ten or more of those, your, your insurance is gonna be affected, potentially lose your license. If you don't pay those fines, PCS net, you can get a hundred of those, a thousand of those and not pay your fine.
Don't affect their insurance.
It's not gonna affect your insurance, it's not gonna affect anything. I mean, they may try and send you, uh, Judicial Department may try and send you to department revenue. But if you're not working, or you're working on the table, there's no way for department revenue to come out.
We talked about this, the legislature, when they made the, when they were talking about all this and they were pushing it.
So I think there's gonna be a big push this next legislative session to take a look at this and try to do something different. But, you know, this was approved to voters and voter rest, so. But the voters also passed measure fifty-seven, which is repeat property offenders. And legislature, um, came around with that. So now there's, there's some ways to keep them on supervision and some funding that comes through for programs. We, we get that money here locally, fifty thousand for two years. As kind of a kick in the bucket, kick in the bucket down the road, but it's something. Um, but the pot's not, not big. I think it's maybe nine million, ten million state by. In small counties, the minimum is fifty thousand for two years. So.
Equally low, people voted on this, they were thinking about marijuana.
Well, the other thing is when this went to the voters, the big thing with recovery centers was the big topic of the first part of when you read into it. You didn't read about the legalizing of this stuff. This was like the fine printed at the bottom.
Yeah, this was very.
So it was sold to the, to the citizens, kind of, kind of tricky.
Yeah, it, it was very misleading and on the actual ballot measure, on the language. As to what this was going to do and what the ramifications were going to be and thing after man. So we're dealing with it today.
And, uh, and because of about measure one-ten, the number of cases that have been removed from supervision purposes statewide. They took forty-five million for two years out of our budget and gave it to Oregon Health to fill it. Before this program, this hotline, we call in, more people get services.
But none of that was in the ballot measure.
None of that was in the ballot measure and.
As far as, as in the language when we voted on it in the pen?
We have more success in getting people insured non-supervision than this program shown in the air. So, um, it's, uh, it's, that's fine, sorry. Especially if this is not in one-ten.
Thanks for the information. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Jim?
So, we received a call a couple of weeks ago. One of our memorial highway signs on three ninety-five north is down, um, gone. I don't know if it was done or hit and run, don't know. Um, but in order to have that sign replaced, um, and set back, we have to pay the six hundred dollars to have that redone. I can't recall who it is. I tried to get ahold of the foundation in Bend that called us and I couldn't get him to call me back yet. Um, I can't find my notes, but I believe it's a World War Two veteran memorial sign. It's missing.
Was it World War Two or World War One?
It might be World War One, I can't remember. I have, trying, I need to get a list. I definitely need to get a list. I'd like to get a list of all of our, of the few that we do have out there, just so I can keep a running tab of what we do have. So when they do go missing, we can pay attention. Yeah, so that's what we've got on the table today. Then I'll find out exactly who.
So have you called ODOT?
Um, I haven't yet, no.
Might come to my office. I think I got the sign guys remembered.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just have the foundation that called me, um, to let me know that the sign was down. That's who had contacted me. That's all I have right now, so.
I'm surprised they're, it's six hundred bucks. Usually they're way more expensive than that.
That's the last quote that I got, so, but I can verify that. But that was the last one they gave me, so.
Do you want to give an update on how things are going in your office while you're here?
They're going pretty well. I mean, I don't have updated numbers or anything. I'm working on my quarterly report since the month, or since the quarter just ended. Um, but things are going, going very well. Um, I've had quite a lot of reception to the established hours that I've got, um, in the office. A lot of, a lot of walk-ins, um, people calling in to set up appointments to come in and kind of revisit, um, their comp claims. I've had some, um, widows that have come in to talk about benefits that are available to them. Um, definite reception to the hours that I've had in Christmas Valley. So just kind of still trying to get through the training. Um, so having some established hours where I shut down and either I close my door and lock it or I go home and study has been very, very good, cause in, getting interrupted definitely as to my day. Um, cause I'd like to try to get accredited a little sooner than a year or more. How a lot of people have said that it, sometimes it can take upwards of a year or more. And, um, my goal is to have that done sooner than a year if I can. So that's where I'm striving.
Good.
Yeah, that's what's going on.
Can you remember the, uh, Band Brothers of?
I did, yes. Last week I had, had breakfast with them. That was fun, intriguing, but it was great. I really enjoyed it, so, yeah.
They are a mean group of guys.
They were, yes. The stories I told were a lot of fun, so.
They love telling them.
Oh, yeah.
Every time you see them.
Oh, I'm sure, yes, I get that here too, so I, I'll take it, so, yeah.
Well, appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you, Dan.
Keep it up. Thanks, Jim. So National Calamans Association membership? Do we have any documentation of that?
You do.
Do you want me to talk about this?
Well, I just need to know if you guys want to re-heal it.
I don't know what this rises. Have you guys done this in the past?
We did it last year.
We did it last year?
Uh-huh, and we appointed you as our person.
Now, is that Oregon Calamans Association or National? I thought we just said OCA.
This is National, so.
And are we?
We've never formed a national, we have.
I don't know.
Oregon.
Yeah.
We have.
So I see, uh, we could be, would we be considered individual supporting membership or business supporting membership? For fifty or two hundred bucks?
I think we paid a hundred and fifty, I think.
It was a hundred and fifty, yeah.
For Oregon.
For the Oregon.
For Oregon.
So are we, do we wanna become members of National Calam and Beef Association? They're very different organizations. I mean, they're similar, but.
Well, I'm not sure that I know what the benefits are, again, I don't know that I have time, so. I think we're good without.
So that's the National, you guys see the Oregon one, correct?
But on that same vein, do we wanna continue with our membership with OCA?
Absolutely.
Yes, okay. Just wanna get that in confirmation on that.
Um, do we can?
Yes.
Let's move down to the AOC Federal Land Management Subcommittee. So we paid for that, right?
Yes.
Yes, and Commissioner Schulenberger, you will be on the, uh, Federal Lands Management Subcommittee for AOC?
We need to ratify that.
Okay, you mean the letter?
No, well, ratify the appointments.
Oh, okay.
You guys decided on it?
Yep.
Cause it was time sensitive.
So do I have a motion on who we're gonna appoint as our subcommittee member?
I'll make a motion that we ratify the appointment of Commissioner Barry Schulenberger to the AOC Federal Lands Management Subcommittee.
I'll second.
Discussion or you wanna call for a vote on that or?
Yeah. Any more discussion on that? Do you wanna explain what that is?
Uh, this subcommittee, uh, reports to the Natural Resources Committee of AOC. As was explained in a meeting last week, subcommittee meeting last week. Many members that are on the AOC Natural Resources Committee deal with lots and lots of subjects, but none of them deal with federal land per se. And they literally say they don't have time. Uh, there's some history, uh, with this subcommittee that they have. Because you have such a wide variety of counties who have different issues. For example, Douglas County, who deals with ONC lands versus Lake County, who's dealing with, uh, resilient landscapes, wildfire, et cetera, et cetera. Versus Clackamas County, who has a totally different idea of what the subcommittee should be doing. And so it's been very, uh, they haven't got a lot accomplished, so to say. Now, I have no experience with that other than witnessing that subcommittee meeting last week. Uh, there were two, uh, votes. One was to eliminate the subcommittee and just have the, the federal, uh, lands, which is fifty-two percent of Oregon. Uh, go back to the Natural Resources Committee to deal with all those subjects. Uh, that vote wound up nine to nine, so it was, it was canceled out. And then there was immediately another one that said, uh, same thing, eliminate the subcommittee, but have natural resources taken on. It was a little different, uh, saying, and that one also went nine to nine. So obviously there's some people who've been on that subcommittee quite a while who have no faith in the subcommittee. And then there's also, uh, people like myself that are new to it that says, hey, let's give it a chance. And let's, you know, because everything that gets approved by the subcommittee gets forwarded to the Natural Resources Committee for approval. It's just a subcommittee of the Natural Resources Committee of AOC. So. There was discussion, uh, about those that did pay their dues to the subcommittee for twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one, where, uh, there were no meetings and nothing was discussed due to COVID, that they be reimbursed. And, um, that did pass. But there is going to be another meeting here, I think on Friday, uh, to finalize some of those talking points, so that we actually have some numbers and, uh, Gina Nicole's gonna make sure that we have that. So very interesting. I don't know. As Lake County, we pay for that subcommittee and that allows us to have a vote. If we didn't vote last week, you know, it probably would have dissolved. So I think it's important and we'll report out and see how it goes. I'd like to just keep the glass half full for this one.
Right. And historically, we haven't paid for that membership. We, we haven't been on that committee. Um, it was very heavily weighted towards ONC lands and everything, but just recently, we did pay for that membership, so.
Because we couldn't vote and.
So on the subcommittee, yeah.
Something like this happened before and it totally changed everything. We, our vote was what made it go the other way, so. All right, First Amendment to Resolution twenty-twenty-two of O two C.
Do we need to vote?
Oh, excuse me. On there, on the AOC Federal Lands, um, Management Subcommittee. Say aye.
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 Sorry about that. Okay, First Amendment to Resolution twenty-twenty-two O two C.
So, this is.
Aids.
Yeah, this is action consideration also, so. Daniel, do you wanna talk about some of the changes that we've adopted in this First Amendment? Because we've already declared the drought, but we wanna clarify.
So we declared the drought, only to kind of setback saying we wanna probably include the. Later regarding ORS four oh one. Well, four oh one was already in there. It was adding chapter five thirty-six, which kind of directs the water resources department to do some stuff through the governor's actions. So, and then they also asked for us to send them a letter that goes to the, dropped right in this council, so. So I drafted that letter and see if you guys are good with that. Um, but basically copy what the Shute County sent, that was a template they sent to all the states to use, so. That's what all that really is, okay?
Did we not have ORS chapter five thirty-six in last year's draft declaration?
We did not. It seemed like that's kind of a new correction, like there's a lot of places that did that this year without that chapter in there. So they said you can do either one. All the chapter four oh, four oh one asked for is that we're doing on, got emergency declaration, you got emergency going on, so.
Ch- chapter five thirty-six, what exactly is that entail? And I have not read that specifically, ORS, so why is that any?
This is kind of just directing the Water Resources Department during a drought emergency to do the special water use.
I guess and some of that stuff.
Okay.
So, it allows them to use their emergency powers, I think, or. This is statute regarding a drought declaration, so.
Well, now I'm curious and I wanna go find out what all their emergency powers actually are.
You should have an email from me with about three or four documents and one of them lines out that chapter in there. See, I can actually have a copy of it here.
Order is making available in Lake County temporary transfers of water right and emergency water use permits.
Do you want these two documents?
You can email them to me later. I'm good with what we have in front of us. I, I just, I'd like to research it better and make sure that we're.
So I think we need to make sure we act on this today. Get this.
I can read, there's a paragraph in this document on the drought declaration process talks about five thirty-six. I can read it if you can.
No, I just, it's just. Oh, which document? What's that?
That's the one that you.
Or that we don't have with us?
Okay. You should have it in your email.
Okay.
So it's the second paragraph, talks about five thirty-six point seven four zero correctly, so.
Go ahead and read it.
Okay. Under ORS five thirty-six seven four zero, the governor has authority to declare that a severe continuing drought exists or may exist in any or all of the drainage basins in Oregon. Based on that declaration, the governor of the Oregon water, the governor or the Oregon Water Resources Commission can also direct state agencies and political subdivisions to implement a water conservation plan or water tell- settlement plan. Additionally, ORS five thirty-six point seven five zero states that a drought declaration by the governor allows the Water Resources Department to provide existing water right holders with access to temporary water management tools described in OER six ninety dash zero one nine. And then talking about more serious conditions, I'm out, uh, ORS four oh one.
Could I see that in mine? Based on the declaration, the governor or the Oregon Water Resource Commission can also direct state agencies and political subdivisions. What political subdivisions? When is the definition of a political subdivision?
Clear of a political subdivision?
Now, I would assume your, uh, the water user groups would be a political subdivision?
Okay.
Anyone that has one of those Oregon licenses in Pro K would be a political subdivision?
All right.
You guys want further discussion or you wanna?
It's just a new ORS that we're being.
We can go on it tomorrow. We wanna research that five thirty-six.
But she really need it.
It's up to you guys, because hasn't governor declared it yet. I don't know if she's waiting on that. She doesn't put her, since we, we went before Jefferson County.
Yeah.
They've already.
We hit March fifteenth, but we were just doing the standard of ORS four oh one that we typically have always done, so. I just, uh, they, are you entertaining a motion?
I'd like to do it today.
Yeah. Well, I'll go ahead and I'll make a motion to approve First Amendment Resolution two zero two-two dash zero two C. In the matter of declaring a local disaster or request to declare a state drought emergency for Lake County.
That includes ORS five thirty-six.
Correct.
Okay, I'll second that.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Anyone in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So now what else?
Uh, when that gets drafted up or fixed or, but I sent you a draft, just do the bait change. Or if you do that, it also just submit to me when it's done off to the OP Center and it'll go through the channels to the state.
And it goes through O N first?
So it goes, it goes to what they call OP Center, which everyone has access to, including the governor's office, and they see it there.
We also have your letter to the drought council. Um, do we just need consensus on that? Or do we need an actual?
But I suppose it accompanies, I guess.
It's supposed to accompany the actual, um, declaration, yeah, amendment, but.
And that's the first time we wrote the letter too. It used to be, they just gave us a phone call to the county emergency manager saying, hey, so, uh, explain what you're doing in drought preparation, so. Did you do a phone call?
Right. I think all we need is a consensus on the letters.
So do I have consensus on the drought declaration letter?
For me, yes.
Yeah.
Comes up.
Okay.
Thank you. You have consensus.
Thank you.
It's Daniel.
Thank you. So is Nick Johnson willing to be here or?
He said he was.
Um, and Darwin too. Um, do we wanna take a short recess and maybe bring up some tables for the joint session in the health district? I know Melanie, you had mentioned that. Do we wanna maybe do something like that? We got time.
If we need tables, uh, do we?
It's a joint session. We've done that in the past.
Just spread chairs out.
So do you guys?
Anyways, let's take a break at nine twenty-nine and see where Darwin and Nick are. Nine thirty. Darwin Johnson, go ahead.
Yep, like so, um, we've had a resignation, uh, from our planning commission and, uh, letter of interest come in for, uh, for replacement. Ben Holden has served on our planning commission, um, since January of two thousand seventeen. You know, has, has done a good job for us and is resigning. Wes Davies, uh, who had previously served on our planning commission, um, was first appointed back in February of two thousand sixteen. And then he. And then he just over a year ago had left the community for about a year, um has moved back and wishes to get back on, and so that's the letter of interest I have to. To put before you to uh see if you will reappoint Wes to serve the remainder of Ben Holden's term, which will end. Um in December the third verse of twenty twenty-four, so just a reminder, there's more to go on that. You know that our planning commission currently has a full body of assets, this is why I'm here, so this will move us back to the. Really excited to have Wes back, he served as chair. If you remember, uh he has father in his south side, west side there. Just had that first corner.
Like those.
Yeah, so. Ranching guy and the planning who's father's sort of planning commission leaders. Maybe that's my recommendation to have that appointment filled and um that's all I really have for you guys today. Hoping that if we fill it today, then we can have him start again, you know, this month when we have planning commission on the nineteenth and we'll have um. Four applications on each of them.
So I heard me from Ross, Wes did leave his position before he stepped down because he is. Job?
No, he moved out of the area, yeah, they moved, they moved to Missouri for a while.
But did he step down or did he finish out his term?
Yeah, he he stepped out when they when they left the area last, it was a year ago in February and then. His position actually remained vacant until December when we. We implemented Nora to fill his position.
That's true, that's right. I have no objection to Wes filling it, Wes is very level-headed. All people die, he's. He's got a good balance of. Thinking thoughts and.
We just need consensus. We have consensus.
Sounds good to me.
Alright, well I will definitely share that with him and get him going for a meeting there.
Appreciate he wants to come back.
Yeah, absolutely, it's great to have him back.
It's good to have him back in the area.
Yeah, yeah, for sure too.
One person you'd have to train all over again.
Exactly, yeah, for sure.
Too terribly surprised, you know, people go down to Missouri thinking, oh yeah, that'll be great, and then they live, they they're there and then they realize they wanna come back.
Yeah, he he definitely said it was different.
Yeah.
He didn't realize how different it was up there.
Missouri's a different place.
That's good. I'm not, um I think it's going well in my department, um a lot of budget hearings soon, so I'll give you updates there, but. You know, we're pretty steady, really busy still for the beginning of the year, so. Close to thirty applications already, so we're on track for a really busy year. Again, majority of those applications are in the Christmas Valley area, so getting up there, not as often as I'd like, but you know, usually every other week or so.
Good, alright, thank you, you know. Should we recess again till ten, what's the plan? What do you guys wanna do?
Let's have, uh can we talk about uh. Please on updates, maybe?
Sure.
Let's talk about uh the family call this morning, wanna do that? Were you on it?
No.
So, uh. On the family call this morning, Congressman Vince was on the call and they're. Basically got all hands on deck trying to see what the feds can do to help us with the drought situation. Uh he asked for input from all the county commissioners that were on the call, if there was anything that could be done. I mentioned to the group that uh to Congressman Vince that. You know, we're seeing uh these environmental groups attacking our our water resources. Such as uh Everlake and then now most recently the article in O P B regarding Summer Lake and For Rock, Christmas Valley, water table and whatnot. So I got a phone call last week um. From. Farrell, just asking what our thoughts were about having a countywide. Water group, water committee. Instead of just north, middle, south, south, you know, central, uh where everybody's kinda has their own committee and just forming one group so that we're the strength of one. And we can handle these issues together versus uh them slowly trying to attack each each water body and whatnot. So it sounds good, we did something similar when we talked to the water masters, uh you know, by inviting a couple people from from all the area, different areas of the county. And that seemed to be very positive and he was gonna get back to us on some detail on that, so. So stay tuned, we we may, you know, he he was just. Uh temperature checking, see what we thought as commissioners approved and support that, so. I said I can't speak for you guys, but you know, I would think that that would be something that obviously be interested in. Uh. I mentioned to Congressman Vince, you know, pretty tough, you know, they're, you know, it was mentioned a couple times, but. The price of hay is extremely high and you know, there's talks of four hundred dollars a ton of hay uh this next fall. Summer for sale.
Come on in.
Uh that's gonna be extremely tough for some folks and you know, if there's any way to look at that, I mentioned that, you know, there's no seed to plant in the ground. If you can find any seed, uh it's pretty tough to come by right now, if there's any way they can exploit, looking at uh getting the seed group northwest. And then the third thing was um. Wildfire and uh how B L M force service require, you know, some resting periods. A lot of them have, you know, on the force service side, I've noticed that they they take a look at it case by case. Uh as far as uh resting and permit and how how much damage is done, how severe of a burn it was. B L M, it's pretty much automatic, three growing seasons, uh we'll have to talk to them when they come to brief list, but. If there's any way we could get that adjusted and shorten that up, I think that would help our our local economy tremendously. Especially if the ground doesn't want three growing seasons to recover. Obviously, everybody wants to to have those grounds recovered the best they can, but uh you know. If there's a possibility that grazing could happen again. I think that it should be looked at.
Right.
So then Todd Nash brought up good point two on the C R P ground. I don't know how much C R P we have anymore, but. You know, just make some of that available.
Yeah.
Paul.
So it was an interesting conversation, uh. Congressman Vince was headed off to that wildfire subcommittee group that uh required an application due two Fridays ago. I put my name in the app for it, but it was last minute. Don't know that I will get selected. But anyway, I think it's important that we try to get somebody from the northwest on that committee. That understands, you know, this part of the geographic area and how we can help. With wildfire action actions, uh be proactive. As well as potential bill reduction strategies of Beverly. I don't know, what else did you gather?
I like the idea, you know, of bringing up that committee for the whole county instead of fractured here and there. I think we need to make sure that takes off, I think we need to be ahead of the game because we know that. Some of these frivolous lawsuits are gonna come and. You know, it's hard enough making it ranching and then having all this stuff on top of it, yeah, so.
I think our goals would have to be defined though for a committee like that, we have some very, very different water systems in Lake County and. Mission is gotta be defined as to what the intent is, it's one thing to bring everyone in the same group, but you know, it's uh. Who who are we talking about bringing onto the table, you know, who's gonna be on that committee and what are we? You know, are we truly representing the entire county or, you know, are there going to be hay growers? And people in the Goose Lake Valley and Everlake, Chewalkan watershed, I mean, like every, you have to have Summer Lake, West Side, Warner Valley.
It's kinda what?
Right, but I'm just saying there's a lot of differences between those water systems and very complex water rights structures within that. It's a lot of pressure to put on one or two people that are supposed to represent an entire area. It's uh. It's a big deal, I mean, it's it's hard, I I'm just saying, because I know it's hard enough, like and just as my small community of Summer Lake. To have consensus on water issues and. There's only a couple hundred people total in the community, but the water rights are so complex between O D F and W. Between um corporate entities, private landholders, the different type of water rights, whether it be flood irrigation or. Ground pumps, you know, reservoirs, a big part, but like me and half the other ranches or farmers in the area that don't have water rights on hand. But, you know, there's a conversation about potentially even expanding the moratorium from the north end down over Summer Lake and. That could get really complex, so I think if we're going to form a committee that's going to be countywide, our mission has to be clear and. It could potentially just. And I I I I'm, I have some concerns on that, I don't know, I'm trying to figure out how that is before people can can get and figure out what's happening.
Well, the deal is all of them have water rights, whether it's in their well or and it's from the stream, and so I think that's the main deal is protecting. Water rights of our constituents.
Yeah, but we're talking about those people right now. We're talking about their water rights and not ours.
I think, I think what, it sounds like there's good positive energy from. People looking at the big picture and I think they wanna put maybe some of those differences aside to help the county. Make sure that we're protecting all of us, uh whether you, no matter where you live, that you're not having your water rights breached more. Is the major goal. So details to be determined, I think you bring up some great points and I think those are things that will have to be sorted.
I'm just very cautious on that topic, I've. I've I've been liaison to the water for three years, I've had a lot of conversations over that time. And you know, the priorities for the hay growers on the north end are the same priorities for the rest of the county and that likewise for everyone else, who cares? Just different missions, different goals. I've I've seen the conversations in the room when I tried to bring people together in the past, beat rail and go south really quickly. It it's great if we can all get together and think one by one, but when talking about people's water runs, they get. They they. It's interesting really quickly, it's more of just a warning than a cautionary tale, I suppose.
Do we have any other updates we wanna go through before? We got about eight minutes. On the regional landfill, Melanie sent out uh. What's that called? Google or not a doodle, huh? Doodle invite? Oh. So we're finally getting state agencies and the potential contractor together. Regional landfill project. We get a date officially set on that?
Fifteen.
Fifteen for all of us getting together and. Visiting about that, which includes regional solutions, Larry Holes gang from Business Oregon. John Jennings from State Planning. Greg Seveland from. C Q. The core, that's what they're gonna call it, Central Oregon Regional Landfill. So that's kinda what.
It's good news, uh the report of a federal judge ruling against Honda. And uh there's one keeping uh uh grazing permits from not being used, so. Uh that affects some of our local ranchers here in the county and uh it sounds like they reported out very well in terms of their situation. And the judge voted favorably favorably for the rancher's settlement, yeah, that's great.
There were really good stipulations by the judge, I thought, very articulated and very well.
The other piece that I, yeah, the other piece that I enjoyed was that O D F and W said that by not grazing. We didn't guarantee that sage grouse numbers would improve.
Farrell was here and did that study, she said that it actually, and hence sage grouse happens to happen, have crazy. So I wish some of that information would go with five point one.
Last thing, uh we've been having uh. Meetings on nine one one, trying to figure out how to uh continue to afford nine one one. The state Oregon currently uh gives about a third of the cost for nine one one and the county is responsible for the other two thirds. Uh town of Lakeview is the responsible party uh because they receive the the money from the state. So we've been having lots of discussions with uh community members throughout county. Had two meetings with Paisley, uh trying to figure out how that other two thirds is gonna come about. In the last several years, uh the county and actually B L M law enforcement, primarily the only two payers to the town. Uh for assessment charges uh to help support nine one one, so. We're looking at all those options and we'll have another meeting coming up here towards the end of the month, trying to come up with solutions.
So are they charging by the call, the cat calls or?
There hasn't been any charges, other than a yearly assessment fee.
And how are they basing that fee? What is that based on?
Uh in two thousand ten eleven, they came up with some numbers. Uh when they did a I G A. And uh I would say that those are the only two fees that will stay consistent, everybody else fell off the plate or just didn't get billed. By the town, so uh we'll, we're trying to work with the town and everybody else to come up with a fair payment system. One of the things that uh needs to be reviewed in the next meeting is the amount of volume calls and per each sub section. And actually, what's the that cost to them would be per call, which I think. Back up there, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't know if that's.
Yeah, I don't know if that's gonna play a lot.
I would say less than half of those are actually realistic numbers, those guesses as far as what people can contribute, um. And I think even for us to a certain extent, we haven't gone through our budget here, budget yet, but if we plug the numbers in, we're gonna hopefully make it work, but. The uh, I think a lot of those, the entities that were present yesterday were spitballing and that's pretty much all it was. I don't know if when, when it came down to it, when the author, when the authority boards, you know, open them. They'll, they'll wanna have anything to do with any of those contributions.
Well, there's bad alternatives.
I I know, I know.
And uh so we've asked them to come and sharpen their pencil and come back with. And so we've asked them to come and sharpen their pencil and come back with a good number.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good to see you three hard at work.
Well, I don't know about that.
I see what they want to do. So do you guys want us to set up tables in here? Do you want circle chairs? How do you guys want to do this? What's best for you guys?
I don't know. I'm I'm uh, I think it's okay this way. If you guys are there, we're here, so.
Yeah.
Now, we're all in position.
You have the higher level, so that's, you're looking down on us, you know, so that's good. Okay, lightning's going to strike.
So do you want us to introduce ourselves or is this a work session? Yeah, we're going to start our joint meeting right now. So why don't we go ahead and introduce it, introduce ourselves and Don, you can start.
I'm Don Leeco, Chair of the Board of Lake District Hospital.
And Amy Hutchinson, the Grant Manager at Lake Health District.
Gerald Stewart, the Secretary at Lake Health District.
Jen Antle, Lake County Veteran Service Officer.
I'm Jake Greer. I'm just uh, just sitting in to listen. I'm also the Community Corrections Director.
Yeah, Lisa Ackerman and I am just here to listen also.
I'm Charlie Twain. I'm CEO of Lake Health District.
Is everybody here for your report?
I think so. Ken called in sick. He's got the test positive for COVID. So.
He also will have sequestered. We will have Kristi Albertson will be on Zoom call.
Yes.
Shortly. She may already be on. Oh, Melanie's getting excited.
We have several. We have Christina Zamora, Heidi Martinez, Kinsey Fishham. Sorry if I said that wrong. And Kristi Albertson. That's a good number of our work group that has been working on this issue. And you know, Jen is on that as well and Commissioner Williams, so that's great. If it's okay with everybody else, start the presentation on the survey results.
That'd be great.
Yeah. Can the people on Zoom hear me? Will you quick for me, Melanie?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know. I can't see. That's a little far for me, but I I don't know if they can hear me or not.
Yes, I can hear you. This is great.
Okay, great. Boy, those owls are magical. Um, so this is, we did a housing survey in Lakeview specifically. And I think, are you sharing the screen now?
Yes.
Great. Um, so over a few months in the fall and winter, and so we could just go to the next slide.
I don't, I just have your PDF.
Just page down. That's perfect. That's perfect. And so we are going to talk a little bit about the background of of how that happened and the survey results and kind of next steps for that. So next slide. Um, so the survey, we were able to do some grant funding for Lakeview specifically, but we have not lost sight of the county as a whole. But we're fortunate that Klamath Lake Community Action Services is doing a similar survey for the rest of Lake County, and we didn't want to do double efforts. So I'm going to let Christina Zamora give an update about that process and timeline.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Morning.
So the purpose of class's work is to assess housing needs and develop a plan to address identified needs in a more cohesive way. There are several organizations working on housing needs from our own perspective, and we'd like to bring everyone to the table to ensure the inclusive inclusivity of the plan. So we are, we have been involved with the efforts in Lakeview. We plan to continue supporting those efforts while figuring out what will work best for and in the more rural areas of Lake County. So we have launched an online media campaign and will be advertising and holding focus groups later this month and the first week of May. The communities we've targeted for these efforts are Christmas Valley, Paisley, Summer Lake, Silver Lake, and New Pine Creek. So we are hoping to have survey results. We're going to keep the survey open through the end of the month. And analyze those results and then hold the focus groups later this month and the first week of May. And we will be on, we will have team members onsite in those communities.
Thank you, Christina. Um, so next slide. Our survey was open, as I said earlier. It was open October twenty twenty one, and it was available online and in locations around Lakeview. This is through grant funding through Meyer Memorial Trust, so we can go on to the next slide. And the the grant funding is to identify the top need and then develop a plan to address it. So people were given a lot of options for what the different issues might be on housing. And the top need identified by far and away, as you can see, is affordable rentals. That is not tied to an income bracket. That's just across the board affordable rentals. And then the next two that if you kind of put them together would be close in size is middle income and low income. Hi, Don.
Hi.
Um, so if you want to go ahead and go down to the next slide, when we're talking about affordable housing, what does affordable mean? And so the definition that most people are using is that the total housing cost is less than thirty percent of your total income. And so that is your rent, that is your utilities, all that kind of stuff. So that's sort of the measure of what affordability means in the broader context of housing conversations. And if at any point you have questions, feel free to interrupt me because it's often easier to take a question when the slide is on the screen. Um, next slide. So you can see that in the context of Lakeview, we've got a pretty high number of renters. The top box shows people the homeownership for Lakeview compared to Lake County in Oregon. It's less on the ownership side, which means that more people are renting. So about thirty four percent of people in Lakeview are renting. And then of people in Lakeview, about forty, oh, I shouldn't.
Forty four percent.
Thank you. What's the top one? Thirty two percent of Lakeview residents overall are cost burdened. That means they're paying more than thirty percent of their total income towards their housing costs, right? And of those forty four, so you know, getting towards half of our renters are in that cost burden category, and then about eighteen percent of homeowners. Um, go ahead and do the next slide. Um, so if we are looking at renters specifically, our mean or average wage for renters in Lakeview is twelve dollars and sixty nine cents per hour. Um, and so if you take thirty percent of that, the total housing cost they could afford would be six hundred and sixty. And our market, our fair market just rent, not utility cost, is about seven hundred and fifty nine a month. You can see there's a bit of a gap there. We're in good company. Harney, Malheur, Klamath, Modoc, we're all seeing kind of a similar gap between our average renters wages and our average housing costs. Um, so we're not alone in facing this, which I'm sure everyone knows. Um, next slide. So this is kind of a breakdown of Lakeview income. And it would, you would have to earn about thirty thousand dollars and some change. Is that thirty or thirty six?
Thirty thousand, three sixty.
I need to get some distance classes. I apologize. So a little bit over thirty thousand in order to afford the market rate to bedroom apartment. Um, and so you can see that there's quite a number of people under that and a large number of people who are who are not too far from it really. Um, so next slide. So if we want to get to affordable rentals, how how do we get there? Like, what are what are the mechanisms to do that? And exploring that is part of our our next steps. But coming out of the survey, go to the next slide, we have some ideas from our survey respondents. So about almost half of people said that they felt that some combination of approaches is what's going to need to happen in order to make progress on this issue. Um, but eighty four percent of people answered that Lakeview needs more housing overall. There just needs to be more than what we have. And most people, a big majority, said that if that were to happen, it would have a positive impact on themselves and their families. So we thought that was interesting. Going to the next slide. Um, it, some people did not feel it was going to have a positive impact, but but most people felt that it was going to have a positive impact on themselves and on Lakeview's economy overall. So that was good to to understand that many people are on the same page about that. So on the next slide. So our next steps, now that we have identified the top need, is to do some of the focus groups that Christina mentioned also for Lakeview to really dig into, you know, affordable housing was right at the top. And what are the details at different demographic levels, right? Is it an inventory shortage? Is all of the income brackets experiencing it or just some of the income brackets, those kinds of questions and really get in, get more details out of people and through focus groups. And then to facilitate with a community-driven process to understand some of the strategies that could be applied to that and what what the community can do together, working together in that room. And I think the next slide. And so really, one of the questions is who's willing to help? Who's willing to be a part of that community-driven initiative to work on this program, you know, on this project together? There are certainly things that municipalities and counties, like the town and county, can do. But when the when the topic is as broad as affordable rentals overall, it's not, the municipalities don't have all the levers to move to move those needles. And so I think it's going to have to be a broad group and include business owners and landlords as well. So that would be our goal is to help convene people and see what we can do and see what can, when can come out of good planning together. And then the next slide is just how to get me now at my new place.
Question for Amy.
Yes.
Do you know the number of subsidized units that we now have in Lakeview?
No, and I was wondering that on the way here, and I, Melanie, is Diana Otero on the call? From Klamath Housing Authority? No, okay. So I think that is a key part of part of our next step of data gathering. It's how many subsidized units are available? Do they have wait lists? Those kinds of questions. Yeah.
Well, I can tell you there are wait lists.
Are there?
Everywhere, anywhere in any city in the nation, anyone seeking affordable housing will go on a wait list.
Yeah. That makes sense, Lisa.
Because I want one.
Yeah, you're, there's at least one. A wait list of at least one is there.
Yeah, well, more.
Yeah.
In my understanding, in Lakeview, the waitlist flits waits one to three years.
Oh, that's quite a long time.
I'm on a wait list and bam, it's going to be five years or.
Okay.
So.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Do you identify how many units we would need to satisfy the demand that we have here in Lakeview as of today?
No, that was not a part of the survey, but that is a part of discussion going forward, I think.
Going forward, any any business plan is going to need to know how many, what the rental value is, you know, at the low income, what the rental value is at, say, medium and higher levels of income, and the different types of housing for each.
Gerald, there was a housing needs, this is Kristi, housing needs analysis that I want to say Portland State did a couple of years ago, that I can email to Charlie to send to the board, or I can email to Mel to send out to everybody. Again, it was twenty nineteen, so it's a bit out of date, but if anybody is interested, I can send that out, and it does answer some of those questions.
I think that'd be helpful. Thank you, Kristi.
So Kristi, can you see that right now?
It's several snidey plus pages long, so I'm not sure how long that would take me to get that, but I can look.
No worries. Thank you. As we're looking for specifics, if you want to have somebody in the in the community to step forward and help fund these things, hard numbers are going to be necessary. Because most of my folks won't invest unless they know what they're investing in and what the rate of return will be. Interest is there.
I was just going to ask you that, Don. Do you think that you have investors who would be interested?
I don't have.
Well, do you think that you know people who have money to invest that might be interested?
John here is good just about.
He wants them at the RV park.
If if we had hard numbers, you know, and and actual locations and and you know, how much is going to be low income, what's going to be subsidized through HUD or whatever, those things are important for us to know. That way we can put a pencil to the paper and see if it works out for a private investor. Now, the public sector is way different when you get funding for low-income housing like we've had here in the past. That's just between the builder and the and HUD and the city or county. That's all public money there. So if you're interested in getting some private money, you got to help leverage into this. You got to have some good figures. A market study really would help.
I I thought Ginger had that done too. Maybe that's the same one Kristi's talking about.
So are you talking about the workforce housing project that was going on a couple of years ago?
Yeah. So I wouldn't, after our meeting yesterday, remember, we were talking a lot about workforce housing, the workforce housing aspect of this. And so I got ahold of Annette Levy, and she was the one who actually coordinated all those meetings. What is workforce housing? Workforce housing? Housing for middle class, blue collar, people who need housing for nurses, doctors, and everything else, our forest service employees and BLM, all of our seasonal guys that come in, they're living in Klamath. Some of them, we were just talking about this the other day. You know, in order to work in Lake County, you have to find housing sometimes elsewhere, simply because there's no housing available. And that's been a real struggle. So several years ago, Commissioner Winters at the time worked with Annette Levy and Ginger, who was at that time working with SCOED, to put together a workforce housing committee and group. And we filled this room up with investors and folks from the community.
Builders.
Right.
And they were looking.
Right. A lot of a lot of the landowners and different things that, you know, had unfilled lots in town and were trying to, like you say, you know, look at the feasibility, like what projects would look like, what their investments would have to look like, what their returns would be. And one of the big bumps in the road when I spoke to Annette about this yesterday was lack of tradesmen. Lack of the, it's the high cost and everything else to build.
That's that's the supply side, but.
Correct.
But we're looking, if we build something, seven hundred and fifty dollars a month, it's probably not going to entice anybody to come build a few townhouses here because you're going to be looking at least fifteen hundred to two thousand a month in order to get some of this housing built, particularly the prices you're looking at today.
Right.
But we could get people here if you have the volume, if you said, well, we need twenty townhouses and we got a place to put them. You could probably entice some of those folks over to build a big project. But if you say, well, we've got one or two.
Right.
It's not going to happen.
The volume, we we need a higher volume.
Yeah. So that's where our survey comes in, and what type of housing and how many units.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, so if you have a public process where low-income housing is put in through the public process and you have also for for higher-end stuff, a private process, but they're both built at the same time, you can do much more. The same builder can be working on both projects.
Yeah, so I don't think that survey actually ever was completed on the workforce housing side. One of the things that we did speak about yesterday in our meeting was um right now at AOC, Association of Burton Counties, there's been a big discussion within a subcommittee, um, County Solutions Committee to kinda take hold of some of the veteran housing needs around the state. That's been a really big topic, there's been a lot of funding that's been going towards veteran housing. And so the discussion that we had in our group was maybe we should focus more on veteran housing that would alleviate pressure on some of the other housing needs in the community and those wait lists, so to speak.
James, is there any kind of a breakdown between what you call workforce housing and subsidized housing as far as the need is concerned, number of units, number of people? Anything we could kinda get a sense of the need?
Again, I was not, I'm only just getting into the workforce housing side because that was largely taken on by Commissioner Winters back in two thousand nineteen. And they have, that group has not met since. Um, and so we we spoke yesterday, we wanna revitalize that group and Annette and I were talking, we'd like to put that back together, but I uh I don't know if I could give you a breakdown, Gerald, of exactly all those differences. I know that we were leaning, originally, we were leaning towards um on the workforce housing side as unsubsidized as possible. And focusing it entirely, um, mainly if not entirely, um, within the private industry and the development of it.
So Christie.
I know.
Christie, you have your hand up.
Yes, I do. Um, and I was just going to pull it, I think it was Don who asked the question. I sent the document to Melanie and Susie, so she can, they can both send the that housing needs analysis out to everyone. Um, what it came out to for the Lakeview specifically, um, based on the I I didn't look to see it, we're just gonna say Portland State. Um, based on population growth, which they predicted to decline. Um, they say we don't need any more housing units. Um, we haven't actually seen our population decline, we're actually seeing growth. Um, but they did say in this analysis that most of the housing available in Lakeview was built in the nineteen fifties. So we actually need more higher quality housing. So either what we have needs to be rehabbed or it needs to be demolished and redeveloped.
That was the same one that I remember. Cause what it said.
Yeah, I think so, Mark.
That we weren't gonna have any growth or actually lose population. Well, Northlake County's already proven that wrong, so. But Don brings up a very good point, we have to know those numbers. We need to know, we have to know how many houses short we are and go from there. The word affordable housing though makes no sense to me because it's not affordable, you know, um, to anybody really. Especially right now, not only are we lacking craftsmen, we're lacking product too. You know, there's a supply chain that's got a big hiccup in it, as you guys know, virtually on everything.
So what kind of numbers?
If we knew that we needed fifty additional one and two-bedroom facilities. And that was our starting number, could be hundred, could be seventy-five, we know it's more than ten. If we knew that number, how would we go about trying to address that? I think one of the things we have to think about is, and and maybe you you have some ideas on this. But um, some of the housing that people are living in, they may be able to afford more expensive houses. Not everybody is below their thirty percent range. Um, if we were to entice someone to build thirty, thirty unit or thirty thirty housing unit someplace, and we've got a lot of opportunity places all around town. Um, how would we go about helping make that happen? What what could the county do? We certainly need it from a healthcare standpoint, we've heard it from the Forest Service that they're constantly short of bringing in people cause there just aren't houses that are hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand dollar amount right now.
I think we'd also have to know not just the number of units, but we'd also have to have a kind of a market study, what are the rents? What would, you know, so we could put this to the pencil and see, could we get, are these two thousand dollar a month? Or for, you know, then can you afford to build for that and I mean looking at the investment.
So when when we look at the econ, the average or in this case, the mean income for the Lakeview area, it does not some uh justify having two thousand dollar a month.
Six to seven hundred.
Okay.
Yes.
And so you really can't build anything for six, seven hundred dollars a month. So somehow you have to make up that um gap because you probably can't build something for less than fifteen hundred dollars a month right? To get your money out, let alone a profit. Okay.
So somehow you have to guarantee if you have a private outfit come in, you're gonna have to guarantee that that will have a rate of return. It'll come out in March five.
Yeah. I could buy a bird seat for two bucks.
Well, that's the point, you know, the a business person coming in is gonna want to see a rate of return on their investment. And if you want them to put in five million dollar uh project, how are they going to get a return on their investment? You know, and installing project, maybe you can help with sewer, water, hookups, electrical and all of that.
Permits?
Permits, you know, the the overhead expenses that are very, that are pretty high, sidewalks and things like that to help them put in the housing at a lesser expense so that they can be assured that they get the right of return.
So I pulled up some documents that Annette sent me. And at the very bottom, it listed barriers from, this was an outcome of the last housing meeting that they had. Um, cost of building.
Mm-hmm.
Codes and fees.
Yeah. How about you guys?
I have a hard time with that though because where the chief is practically in the state.
It's still, it's it ends up with the bottom line, James, it's it's all.
Yeah, I know, but it just, I I I do have a hard time with that because.
Are you saying it's not a barrier?
I don't think it would be.
In comparison?
No, no, it do you know?
For example, we we recently raised some of our fees that were forty bucks to a hundred bucks.
So you don't think it's a.
It's a hundred bucks, is that sixty bucks, a crippling deal?
So so the the answer is you don't think it's a barrier? Okay, well, that's fine. We still have to figure out how we get.
No, I I didn't say, I didn't say that though, Charlie, that's not what I said.
You said, you don't see how it's a.
I I I said, I had a hard time with the fact that that is the major barrier when we are the cheapest in the state.
Okay.
It's one of, it's one of the barriers.
Yeah, okay, it's right, and it was listed as one of the barriers and.
Cause it's not just you guys, it's the state, it's the feds, it's everybody that has a a look at what what goes on, you know, fire marshal, everything. Those are all really expensive people.
And I think, you know, like you were pointing out, sidewalks and some of the infrastructure and everything it takes, hookups to the town water and sewer and everything else, I could definitely see that.
Yep.
Um, but again, like, we don't typically, we're not, we're not doing those permit fees, that's usually the town of Lakeview that's doing those.
Right, so you're just one of the guys.
I I know.
But there's other permit processes and I was lumping them all together.
Yeah.
Okay, so you guys may be really inexpensive and that's wonderful, but overall, it's still a barrier.
Yeah, I mean, we're definitely not making a lot of money on those things, we're barely in the black and the uh and the reality is even if we were to lower them, say we didn't raise our fees to where we have them now, uh to that hundred dollar um permit, permit that's a thousand dollars in the Shute's County or more.
Right.
Um.
The whole idea though, it's not for you guys to make money, it's to have housing for local people.
Right, right.
And we're not making money.
And then we'll see that's, and if we if we drop it down lower, the if we drop the actual fees that the county run down lower, we supplement that loss with our general fund dollars. So it's still, there's still a trade-off, one way or the other, it's still a subsidy. So. And and that was only one of them, granted, and it's relative to the market, uh, is what they say state here. And the need to find someone who can build at lower cost was something that they found was, you know, paramount. Build at a lower cost, I still think that's dictated by the market. I I I don't know how 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 much authority we would have.
Yeah, when you when you look at lower cost, you look at also volume, if you if you're building twenty units or if you're building ten, there's going to be a significant difference in the cost per unit.
Right, and so that was also something that they did list under the follow-ups. They say build five to six homes at once to make it worthwhile for subcontractors to come to Lakeview. They talk about larger scale projects and everything, maybe we could hit some of those, maybe we could subsidize projects with um, some infrastructure dollars, we could pay for a road, a street, whatever it might be, to pay for sidewalks, hookup fees, additional plumbing, sewer. Um, we can, we can maybe offset a lot of that, that normally would all be on the contractor or the developer. Um.
I think five, five to six units is kind of low.
It is low, but that's what they state in this.
In the twenty, at the minimum, so.
Yeah, you're probably right, it probably isn't a minimum.
Cause we talk about, you know, the units that are already, they say no new units, but we need to upgrade. Well, if you take a look at some of the stuff that needs upgraded, it needs the D A cap and.
They listed that as one of.
The upgrade with the bulldozer?
Yeah.
They they listed that as the, one of the top three needs that there needed to be, uh, there was a need for rehabbing of existing housing stock. And uh, so I think I'm definitely hearing that around the room also.
Now, isn't there some type of a program available, dollars available for rehabbing? So in Plymouth County, they used part of their art funds for rehab project, up to fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And how they did it was the house couldn't be lived in for over a year. And so it's a vacant house. And um, they get fifty thousand dollars, but they have to put the money in and then they give them the receipts of the property for the property and then they reimburse up to fifty percent or fifty thousand.
There's also community development block grant programs that are available for something like that, that county could administer if we decided to. Uh, we can have an investor come and then we can help subsidize some of their cost with community development block grant dollars. I've talked to Business Oregon about that before, so it's something we could explore if you guys decide to.
Any type of dollar amount that you're aware of?
Um, I don't know of the total dollar amount. Um, I think it varies by program, I can look into that more and circle back if that's something people are interested in. And then we can, there, those funding sources are available twice a year. So we could try to, try to go for that and I think it'd be good to have the survey and needs and stuff completed before we apply for it, just so we know what to.
Cause there's some wanna know about it.
Yeah. But it it's just an option we could evaluate and then reimburse contractors. I've spoken to a contractor that's available, he said he'd bring his tradespeople over from Clamette if we had a big project.
Yep.
And he'd come over and iron it out, not saying like we unfairly advertise it or anything, but I know there's some interest in it.
When he said big project, did it give you an idea of how many units?
Well, probably twenty to thirty units, they'd come over for a couple of weeks and.
Okay.
But it'd have to be worth their time.
So those would be new units or rehab rehab units?
He wasn't specific.
I know they love to build new.
Those contractors.
Yeah. Well, and there's, there's a way to kinda think about it as a puzzle overall, right? Like as Charlie said, there are people who probably could afford more as a rental who aren't willing to buy cause they're not sure how they'll, how long they'll be here. Could we move them to newer units that work on a business model? And then think about how to rehab some of those existing units and let the market pressure help lower the price when there's not so much demand on those units. So I think it's worth considering a lot of options and seeing how the puzzle all fits together in a way that we can get where we need to get.
Well. I needed to go back if I could, Mark, just to the veterans' housing and maybe Jen or or James can answer this. Is that basically we would be talking subsidized housing and would not be in competition with the workforce housing that we're talking about getting?
It would be specific to veterans.
Mm-hmm. Kinda like the, I think the, what the the models around the state that they're looking at right now are more of those tiny home style models, those smaller communities, um.
Yeah.
Like eight to twenty units and on an acre, so all kind of facing in, you know, in around the courtyard kind of situation.
Yeah, kind of like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, Union County had a great example, one that they just completed. Um, Commissioner uh Scarfo um was in a, up in Union County, he was in a big article, I think in the uh Eastern Oregonian. Um, kind of highlighting the uh the the completion of the project. So yeah, it was very much similar to that, it's this small and tiny homes, but very veterans specific.
And it was. It was, it was a veteran.
Yeah.
Correct, but the idea behind that and the reason why we were considering it in our meeting yesterday was because if we can find a place to house veterans and we acknowledge that there is a tremendous need in our community, we have a lot of veterans who are looking for housing, if we can find veteran-specific housing for them, it alleviates the pressure on some of the other housing in the community.
So quantifying this, how many veterans do we have that are looking for housing?
Well, again, you know, this was basic conversation we were having with Jen this morning. Jen's new to her position too, trying to figure a lot of that out, um.
We don't have that specific number, but I think it's something that we could readily come to fairly quickly.
Okay.
And these would be veterans that are single, not husband and wife?
I'm not sure in the model. I think it could vary.
They were, it was, it didn't say.
It did, yeah.
Yeah, so I think there's, I mean, those models are kind of um vague on that depending on the needs. Um, until I've seen some that have had, um, they're a little bit larger for just a husband and wife, that older generational model. Um, I've seen some that are single, so I think it really depends on on that need and what we identify as that need.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that's broken out anywhere else in the state, on any different housing community that's only for single veterans or not. But I yeah, I mean, we and we were considering both Christmas Valley, Northlake County.
So the one that, but uh you said Yumutilla?
Union, yeah, that was the most recent one, I think we should calculate.
Union. Okay, you know, what's the average rental and what's their unit, what do they look like?
Uh, honestly, they look like those tiny homes that uh, you know, that are per se along the side of the highway that people use for their sheds, that's what they look like.
Well, they're, they, the ones they presented at the meeting were about five hundred square feet. So they're not quite tiny home size, they're a little bit larger, but but they're they're like little cottages, you know, that are like if you see some of our older homes around Lakeview that are like a two-bedroom, one-bath small house, it would be about like that.
Yeah.
Or a one-bedroom house.
I think you're right, I think the ones in Union County were between four and five hundred square feet.
Yeah.
So who put it in, the county or a private contractor for the county and who who funds it?
I think it was largely through grants at the state. The county applied for those and it went through the county.
Okay.
And then uh, I I think they leveraged several different avenues of dollars. And located projects.
And the strategy at the meeting was, at the state level, some of these housing dollars, it's a a high administrative burden to apply and administer those projects. And so the AOC strategy that they were considering is bundling projects together under one application across multiple county sites. And it's again, very early um in the in the discussions, I think, but um that was the model. Um oh, Melanie's coming through with it.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Better just found that.
Thank you, Christine.
So.
So that's something the county could do in conjunction with other counties. That is what you said, right?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, and and A O C is kind of taking point on some of these type of projects. They they'd like to facilitate and help organize, you know.
What's A O C C O C say?
The Association of Workin' Counties, pardon.
So have we have we joined any any consortium like that to get a project in?
We have not proposed a project of this type in Lake County. We've talked about it a lot in the past, but we have not actually proposed one. Simply because, well, for a multitude of reasons around the conversation of subsidy government subsidized housing. Um we just haven't tried to uh take that bullet yet.
And A O C is very early
If I could be perfectly frank.
in their conversations. So so even if they even if these guys at this moment decided that's what they wanted to do, there's not a mechanism in place to do it yet.
Correct, correct. A O C is still in the talks of trying to figure out the the county solutions committee at A O C is fairly new. They're looking, it it's been kind of a project by the current president and past president of A O C to edit to push forward, giving A O C some legs. And and giving them some goals where they can actually um get out there and help individual counties with different projects. Housing was cited as one of the greater needs across the board by all the counties. And veteran housing, that became a big part of that conversation. Because most of the counties, you know, they have large veteran populations. They have a lot a large need. And uh something that they felt like they could maybe tackle and help counties with. So again, it's they're not fully prepared to jump into it either, but um I don't know. We.
I I have a question for the group. Maybe you can consider this. In a lot of the housing meetings that I've gone to uh on a state level, what they've said is you really need to have um a development company to do, put together these projects. And what they've talked about to me is there are nonprofit development companies that do housing projects. They're predominantly based in the Portland area. And they predominantly focus on, of course, where's the greatest need and that's where the greatest population centers are. Um if we were to create a development company here in Lake County, we actually have one that could work like that. What we don't have is somebody to be in charge of that and to really work on housing, Lake County housing needs.
Talking about a project manager for these type of things?
Well, um project manager would be a good term. Um I think the model is um what we are doing at the Health District is sort of indicative of that. We started off with having Christie Albertson write a lot of grant supports. As we grew those grants and it went from a relatively little amount to it's in excess of a million, million and a half dollars. So it's a lot of money that G R processing. We've brought on Amy specifically to help us manage those grants. And we brought on a an accounting person to help us manage the financing because there's so much of the reporting and all that. Um so this this has been an organic growth, didn't happen overnight. As the Health District, well, there's no doubt, no question, we need to have housing for workforce. As a county, we need to have workforce. We need to have veterans. We need to have some, uh you know, there's a lot of housing needs. And we don't have anyone in the county that I know of who is focused specifically on housing. We're all sort of dabbling with it. We got a lot of studies, but we don't have a real focused attention on that. We have a tool, actually it's a five oh one C three nonprofit company that we could put that together. The challenge is how do we find somebody just to get that started? If we could get some, if we we could pool some money to hire somebody, doesn't it isn't always easy to find. We were fortunate that Amy lived here. But sometimes you have to look outside to help with housing because housing is a complicated business. But if we were to pool our money, hire somebody and have them focus on developing, there there's a fair amount of money that is to be found. But there's also contractors that are willing to do work and there are, but but you have to do it. And I don't see anyone with a focus like that. As a health district, it's hard for, it's not um inordinate for us. But it is difficult to keep adding on people that don't necessarily bring us revenue, but do bring us great need. If there was, I I mean, the the cost of someone to do this is not small. Because it isn't just their salary, it's a lot of traveling and it's a lot of uh do putting the whole thing together. I I think we ought to think about how we as a community, if we don't do something, we just keep doing studies. And that's nice, but it doesn't change the dynamic. It was astounding. And and Mark, when you talked about the meeting that we had, talk about, you know, what could we do? We had a lot of developers here. We had a lot of a lot of people, some um property owners, some potential investors. You know what astounded me most about that is not a one of the developers said, yeah, we'll develop this. We know there's a need. That's what developers do. I didn't quite understand why they didn't want to. Um what it probably really says is there are other places where opportunities are greater. And smart people go where there's greater opportunity. If we don't create our own opportunities, no one's going to do it for us. And all we'll keep doing is making studies and watching other people do this. But I think we need to get after it. That's my opinion.
I I'd like to say yes, I agree. Uh because even though I've not been to one of these meetings before, I certainly do pay attention to the newspaper or whatever reports are coming out. And that's what I recognize over the past few years, five years or however long this has been discussed, is a lot of discussion and zero action. At some point, a step has to be made forward like Charlie's suggestion to at least take, attempt to take that step and start somewhere.
Question, I hear about Plymouth Lake Housing Authority and there's some things that are within both counties or some things that have you got a sense, is there help there? Is there anything that we're missing or we're not receiving that uh could help us?
I know that Christina's more.
I don't think we have Plymouth Housing Authority on, Christina.
We don't have Plymouth Housing Authority on, yeah.
Yeah, okay, but Christina works.
Yeah.
Is Mar- does Marina, do you work there?
She's DHS, right?
She's DHS, okay.
Sorry, no. Took me a second to get off of you. No, I work for DHS.
Okay. Okay.
What's Christina?
So
Go ahead.
This is Chris- so this is Christina. So uh Class does offer rental assistance in both counties. And that's that's sort of the extent of our involvement. I would be interested in supporting Lake County efforts. I think that um I'm having some thoughts around what Charlie said. We, you know, we would be interested in, you know, cost sharing of a project manager. I mean, I I agree, there's a lot of interest, but you know, nobody nobody's raising their hand um to take this on. Um I personally, I don't think it's necessarily Class's place to lead the effort, but we would certainly be supportive of it and try to find try to find resources to support the effort.
Christina, when you talk about um rental assistance, help those of us that don't know all about what that means. Could could you define, so if someone says um well, could you describe a scenario of how that would work? Like a worker.
Sure. Sure. So if um someone applies to the program because they cannot pay their rent or have not been able to pay their rent, we have funding available that can help them um get caught up. What we've been trying to do through the pandemic is pay forward rents for folks. We also have an element of that program that can help someone move into a place. So um for example, Class would pay their security deposit and a couple of months' rent to help them get stable. The issue that we're finding with that program element is it's really, really hard to find rentals that um people that come to us can afford.
And it sounds like it's a short term uh program instead of a long term for someone who is low income?
It it is short term. We do have funding that's a little longer term, but the that funding is extremely restrictive. So the income guidelines are extremely low. And so it's hard, it's hard to qualify folks for that program, but with those particular funds, we can assist up to two years. And so we've been trying to um build a better partnership with DHS to identify folks that would qualify for that program so that we can provide that assistance.
So again, you know, I mean, we're the group wanted to bring this data to both boards so that we had this information, we can figure out a path forward. Um what kind of project do is it that we want to pursue? Do we, you know, what kind of, to what degree are we willing to subsidize housing? And how, what type of project are we willing to take on? It's one thing to say, yeah, we will take it on. But we we needed the housing survey. We are still looking for more information and it sounds like, you know, we're also being asked for additional information and data on workforce housing to determine, you know, whether or not it's even feasible for a developer to come in. Um we wanted to have this meeting with you guys today jointly because, well, Charlie, you've asked multiple times to so if we could help tackle this housing need together. It's a it's a serious need in our community. How much we can, how big of a part the county can play in this, it's yet to be determined. Um veteran housing has been kind of something that we've thrown out there. Um behavioral health housing, uh that was something that came up. Uh Amy, do you mind? I'm just gonna jump in, just kind of give a little brief summary of the five two oh two bill that came out.
No, go ahead. You probably know more about it than I do.
So um House Bill five two oh two um allocated about a hundred million dollars in appropriation for community health programs. And it was mainly centered around uh housing and residential treatment. Um Lake County's portion of that, according to the most recent chart, came out to about one point four million. So and you know, obviously the Health District, you guys have the contract to provide the mental health services to the county. Uh these dollars are specific for behavioral health needs and how these dollars will be utilized in in the realm of housing. I don't know if we've fully determined that yet.
What kind of a timeframe are you working under on that? James, any deadlines to meet?
It's a very good question. It's a real good question, Gerald. I'm not entirely sure what the timeframe is on this on this or when the dollars have to be allocated um and then spent by.
So the latest from the Association of Mental Health Networks, yeah, remember the C M H P is what we contracted with the county to deliver for mental health. The association hand lead for that group, because there's a C M H P in every county. They believe the timeframe is if the money gets, appears the money's been allocated, it appears the money will be sent to each of the counties. It have will have to be spent by the end of this, by any, so twenty twenty three. Now, the the hard part about it is how's anybody gonna be able to spend that money when we don't have housing? We can't really, you could say, well, we'll support somebody's house, but if we don't have a place to put them, how are you gonna spend it?
Are are these reimbursement dollars or upfront dollars?
Sound clear, sound clear. They what they have said is here's a pool of money, you figure out what to do with it. We don't, no, we don't know what the restrictions.
And they only gave us two years to really kind of figure that out is what you're saying pretty much.
No, they gave us two years to spend.
A year is three months.
Not a year to figure it out, a year to spend it. And so it's um it's a challenge.
Sure.
And we want to be as thoughtful as we possibly can. That's one of the reasons why I think we need to take this up next level. Because this is coming, yes, if theoretically, if we don't wisely spend the money, we have to give it back. And it's hard to spend that kind of money if you don't have a good plan. And this information was provided last Friday, I think, is when it came out. Asking all the counties, are you in to take the money? Because what are you gonna do? And nobody knows.
Right.
So everyone's speculating. But I think we have to be we have to be very thoughtful on this.
Charlie, you brought up some very, very good points. Um and Mrs. Ackerman, you also with, I don't want to have meetings just to have meetings, just like everybody else. We need to start acting on this. One of the people that I can talk to that I know of developed a program was Randy Cox over in um Casita. I don't know a ton about the program. He kind of let me know how, when and passing, but how it works is Casita paid into this building group. And then each contractor pays into the group. But they guarantee the money on the house or the building that they're building. And then they pay the contractor out of that. And I'll talk to him some more, maybe even have him come and visit with us the next time we do this. Because the strategy is very good. They've built, I think it's only been running for about five months and I think they're they're at six or seven homes.
So what kind of homes are we talking? Workforce housing? Affordable housing?
I don't.
Veteran housing?
I I don't, I don't know what.
It depends on your income. Honestly, that's honestly where the definition lies, is what your income level is.
But anyways, um I know that they they're kicking out about a house a month. And he's got several different contractors, but the deal is with the contractors, once they finish one house, they have to start another one. And it just keeps multiplying that money in that fund. And um anyways, I'll I'll talk to him about it.
Be great, Mark.
Yes, Mark.
Uh Marina said, I do want to get back to one point made earlier on. Housing is also an employment capacity issue. We at DHS have lost potential employees coming to Lakeview here because there is a lack of housing in general for people to live. What happens then is it seems each hire always what happens then is we seem to each hire away employees who have existing jobs in the community. In short, lack of housing is causing workforce capacity issues for us.
Yeah, that's.
And then um.
Yeah, one hundred percent.
Christina said, O H A has three grant application periods, one ending in July, one ending in November and one ending in March. Christina said, O H A has three grant application periods, one ending in July, one ending in November, and one ending in March of twenty-three. Um, and then she has, what they're for? If you, if you ladies have anything you'd like to add to that?
Charlie, do you think that there, this, I don't know, this, this funding that was released to, that was going to be released to the counties? Do you think that, I guess we haven't seen any restrictions of how, how these fans are, we don't know the rules yet, but you think partly some of that funding could be used to staff a person to take the lead on this?
Good question.
Or maybe it could be seed money for what, similar to what Casita's doing. Matching funds with all, you know, with the veterans, matching funds with a number of these programs. We need to have something specific and put together and you need to have somebody doing it.
Again, this,
We got a lot of ideas.
These dollars, though, were only for behavioral health.
Yeah.
Okay, but that's fine.
Right, yeah, no, I'm just, that's one minute.
You should get, you get the contractor over doing behavioral health, but you know, while he's here, if you line up things for
Correct.
a contractor.
Right.
Doesn't matter that it's just behavioral health here for these dollars.
Behavioral health can apply for this part.
Use it as a magnet for putting in all the other stuff so that they've got a multimillion dollar project. And now you're talking, somebody will come and do it.
What sounds to me like one of the opportunities is to figure out, how do we get funding in place to put somebody on this as, that works on this every day? From finding grants to finding contractors to, you know, putting the, a, a project manager over the housing issue of Lake County. And I think that's one of our starting points is figuring out, how do we find funding to get that position in place?
And see, I think A O C is attempting to be somewhat of a project manager for many of these housing needs. Um, Gus Bidwell, he's, he, he's been to Lake County long, Andy Smith, he's come down here, he's worked on some of the housing projects that we've had. Gus wrote me just the other day, he's kind of moved over into another capacity. But he writes me just because he was like, hey, what's happening with Lake County and housing needs? And he's more spectrum.
And it's great, it's great to have those resources, but we need somebody specific here.
We need someone specifically here.
A O C is a great resource, uh, you know, Clamath is a great resource, but we need someone here. I agree a hundred percent.
Well, that's kind of ironic. Where are they gonna live?
Maybe that's the first house they need to work on.
Build yourself a room, right?
Yeah, that's their first project, build yourself a house.
If you could put them in one of the rehab units, here's, here's fifty thousand, go fix it up while you're living.
Well, I mean, it seems to me that person isn't gonna be a local person. It will need to be someone who is familiar with these kind of development issues.
More than likely.
Yeah.
But you know, again, I, I want to bring us back, what type of projects are we actually looking to fund and pursue? Because we're the good, we're the decision-making bodies.
Right, but I think a lot of that will depend on what opportunities present itself, is in the forms of grants and funding and programs.
And a market survey.
A lot out there.
You're, you're gonna have to start somewhere. We're not gonna be able to say, here's fifty units, go put them in.
No, no, but, uh, should we prior, but what are the priorities? Can we at least put some priority list together? Should we prioritize behavioral health and veteran housing?
But it sounds like if we have funding for behavioral health, that's where you start. We've got funding. If veterans come to us with, we've got a program and money. We've kind of pointed where the opportunities come to us to help fund it.
Right, but the, the committee, like the meeting that we had yesterday, you know, that has been kind of tackling this with Christie. Christie, I, I recognize you have your hand up, just, I'll wrap up. And, uh, we don't have the decision-making authority, you know, in that board. We have to bring it, I have to bring it back to my fellow commissioners. And you guys need to know what we're kind of pursuing to, that's the only reason I'm kind of bringing that up. Christie, go ahead, you got something?
Yeah, when talking about priorities, we did the housing survey in Lakeview. Christina's doing the survey and the rest of the county. Um, we need to not forget that the community is telling us what the priorities are. I understand we need to consider what the county can do, what the town can do, where the funding is, believe me, I understand the funding piece. But we can't disregard what the residents are telling us either. Otherwise, we've done a survey just to do a survey and we're telling people, I'm sorry, your opinion doesn't matter.
Totally agree.
Yeah, and the, and the top, out of the top ten from that, da- from the data figure on the page, when people answered it, affordable rentals was at the top of the list by far. And affordable, I guess, just for the sake of argument and definitions, it's just, it's, it's directly correlated to what your income is. Um, and then forty-eight percent felt that additional housing would have a positive in, a positive impact on the community and people's lives. So, no, very good point, Christie.
Well, I'm, I think what's gonna happen too, no matter what program is in the lead, it's gonna leave, relieve the pressure later somewhere else down the road. And that's the whole part, I guess that's would be our main goal is we realize we have a housing crisis and it virtually covers every income level. And so when you start somewhere, it's gonna relieve the pressure everywhere, I think. And what happens too is when somebody builds a house, more than likely somebody else is gonna build one, blah, blah, blah. And maybe it's, uh, making available a rental. Exactly. We're in. I think, I think where the county has been in my short tenure here is we've been focusing on more basic needs of water. And I think we fully recognize that the next step is once we get the water problem solved in all our communities, that we need to take this next step with housing. And we haven't really, uh, tackled the housing because we haven't been ready for it because we have more basic needs. So, I know it's frustrating, but, uh, opportunity hasn't really presented itself for us on the housing side because we're waiting on, you know, what are the needs, how do we get into the game, et cetera, et cetera. So, but your timing of coming here today and talking with us is, is timely and important. We need to make sure that it keeps floating at the top of our priority level. That's where I kind of see things.
Am I correct in hearing that both board bodies would like more information, more detailed information about the needs and the potential solutions?
And opportunities.
Right, and so then we can talk about where those needs and opportunities can come together.
We know that there's a need, what's the marketing study? How many units and how much are people willing to pay or how much is gonna be subsidized, or how many are gonna be mini houses?
Right.
Um, we need to know the specifics.
Yeah.
Because then you can put a dollar amount to it and say, okay, James, we only need ten million dollars and it's in your trump change up front there.
Got right here.
No.
But let the right here show that Don wants a market study.
Christie, you have your hand up, he likes numbers, I know, I.
Yes. One of the questions we asked on the housing survey is, uh, whether you would be interested in helping take the next steps. Um, otherwise, the survey was totally anonymous and we do have, what was it, Amy, about twenty names?
Yeah.
People who were interested in being part, including one of you commissioners, I will out you. Um, so we do, there are more brains who are willing to help with this. Um, I'm gonna throw that out there, we have phone numbers, people to contact, and gonna ask if you all are willing to meet outside of business hours to continue these conversations.
Is that a question?
So you're talking about community representation?
Yes.
Like a community board?
Well, or at least individuals involved in the process.
Maybe that narrows down the help of us find a leader.
Yeah, it's a good pool of applicants right there.
Have you seen the list? No, I'm just kidding, it's a good pool.
All right, any more comments?
I just think at, at some point, it's gonna get down to the studies, et cetera, of taking action and that is starting to be putting a project manager on this. The community thinks sort of that, that this is a priority, let's get some action. Yeah, so I think that's, that's, if we aren't willing to make that step at some point, I don't think much will happen.
James, do you think there's any potential through, I forget what Annette's group is called?
Regional Solutions with the Governor's Office.
Yes, is there potential there for like a project manager funding in the future, do you think, or is that?
I could ask her, um, maybe through her business organ, there might be some potential possibility there. I know Annette was the one who coordinated and, you know, was, put together the workforce housing meetings in the past. I don't see why we couldn't potentially look at something like that. We could, yeah.
Because it seems like that's kind of one of the big stumbling blocks is how do we get the funding to make someone be, to pay for someone's time, to do a market study, to analyze the opportunities, all those sorts of things.
Right.
That would be here next week.
Will she? How convenient.
So that's something we could definitely talk about.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Any other comments or suggestions?
We have an effective session at two o'clock.
Thank you, guys.
Good discussion.
You.
I did. I'm bossing.
Very good answer to your question.
You know, if you want to.
Definitely.
Says, you can remodel housing, you have to do it long-term. You can spend money, it's all. So.
You can walk it out.
Nobody. And we said we would get, we would take.
They're not likely to come to the place.
We told them.
Right.
Take whatever you want. That was.
Exactly, yeah, and it's.
I mean, it's a not-for, not-for-profit experience in building a non-housing.
Yeah.
And they're all senior.
What's the story on that?
That is good to know because we walk around in a car and that thing is like, what are the models that we can even look at to see if it works here?
Yeah. Right, and so I don't remember the name of the nonprofit, but.
But it's probably a few retirements, I can find out.
Right.
Look, I'm sure you looked at.
Yes.
The information's on there.
You know, I know that probably. What's, is there some?
Gerald, I have a question for you.
I love you.
Oh, Gerald, hello. Are you distracted?
I was waiting for your conversation. Yeah, so does this mean you're gonna get moving out of Jersey at some point?
Well, yes.
Something.
It's not happening unless fifty-four people die, you know, so I won't be moving in.
Are you number fifty-four?
Yeah.
Oh, my God.